Thank you. If you are a non-voter, I would ask you to please either sit on this side of the room The exceptions to that rule is Brendan Zubricky, Town Administrator, Greg Corbo, our Town Council, Roxanne Tierney, our -- I have Town Council, but it's treasure -- Town Accountant, members of the Essex, Manchester Essex School Committee, the school superintendent, the Comcast TV coverage reporter, which is, tonight is Becky Tober, she's in the back, the Gloucester Times reporter, is there a Gloucester Times reporter here tonight? Oh, she did make it. And David Clark from the Cricket is here. You know, Ginny, how many years that you live in town, it's just as a...
It's kind of land, it's just at Spring Street.
I understand. I understand. I want to remind everyone that smoking is prohibited in school and on school grounds. I'd like everyone to rise and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you would mind, please remain standing. I'd like a moment of silence for town officials who have passed since our last town meeting. Ronald W. Perrine, Arnold Pick Thistlewood, Valerie Simons, Al Chincola, and Arlene Pizzo. May they rest in peace. I'd like everyone to sit, to be seated except for town employees or appointed and elected I just would like to recognize everyone that's here. Our town won't work without the volunteer effort that these people give you, and we should give them a round of applause. Good thing, a nice thing about Fall Town Meeting is that we get to recognize some important employees. To recognize 20 years, is Dan Ball here? What? He's working? Twenty years on the Essex Fire Department, we'd like to thank him for his service. Twenty years on our police force, thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
Senator Bruce Tar just has entered the room. Oh, I can't believe it, he's been here this long? Thirty years on the Essex Fire Department. And one of the things that I think is truly amazing about Essex is that we really do have a good fire department. They work really hard to keep us safe, and if it wasn't for the work that these guys put in, God knows. So, thank you very much, 30 years. Another 30-year man. You don't look that old. Now, when I look at this one, there's something wrong with us. How old are you? Forty-five years, that means he got on at 18. Okay. Is Kay Joseph here? Please come up. You know, each year, we go out and we ask for nominations for as a single volunteer for the service that they give to our community, and also an employee. I don't pronounce that. You know, this is an early one, I asked everyone to scan if it was a county official or board member. Without that work that people do, this town won't operate the way that it does. And folks like Kay, if it wasn't for you, at some age, where would we be? We need folks like you, we really appreciate those. Is Mr. Brophy out here?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, come on up. Another distinguished volunteer, I'll take off. He's always moving the decoys and birds and cars. This man works real hard for our town. And it's all in the little things that sometimes you don't see. But, you know, we have a veteran tomorrow up front of Town Hall. Bob's worked on that, keeping it up, it's been a tough couple of years, you know, and this town and woodworking has certainly helped us a lot. The ConCon, we had a letter from a ConCon committee recommending Bob for this award. ConCon committee couldn't work without him. And he's been here, no offense. Folks, right? It's folks like Bob that make Essex. Could I have Mark Lynch, Jeff Jones, Susan Coviallo, Lisa, Dave, and Andrew come up here for a minute? Now, there was a nomination for Employee of the Year, but we did get a letter that said, "I have a nomination for the Employee of the Century." Well, it's not hard, really, to figure out who this is, but I was a Selectman for 12 years, and I asked the Selectman to come up because until you're a Selectman, you don't realize how important Brendan Zubricky is to this town. And I think of all the things that he's done, and all the service that he gives to us, and he never complains. He's always there. Look at the Town Hall. If it wasn't for his efforts, and a lot of other people, but he led the charge, we wouldn't have gotten the money, it wouldn't have gotten done. But it's other simple things. When I was Selectman, we tried to get a parking lot behind the post office, and by the way, keep the post office, too. If it wasn't for Brendan, we would never have had that. You know, everywhere in town, if you look around and you think about it, Brendan has touched it. Brendan has made it better. Brendan has made it easier for these, the seven of us, to work as a Selectman. Brendan, can you come up here? You know, the other thing about Brendan, he never really wants to take the credit. He doesn't want to be in the spotlight, as you just saw. But tonight, he is in the spotlight, and Brendan, my heartfelt thanks for the service that you give to this town.
Thank you very much.
Does everyone have a copy of the Town Meeting Procedures, this yellow sheet? To speak at the meeting, unless you are physically unable to do so, please get in line behind this microphone, and stand in line, and when it's your time to speak, you will speak. When you speak, always give your name and your address. Those physically unable to approach the microphone should raise their hand, and we will bring the microphone to you. The moderator will recognize the voter, and then may then state their name, state their business. Each time a voter is recognized in a meeting, the voter should state their name and street address. All motions are to be in writing and handed to me after the motion is made. Discussion must be only on the question being considered and confined to the issues. In this forum, it is encouraged to have full and open discussion on the issue being debated, but debate must be respectful to those with differing viewpoints, and the moderator will have zero tolerance that includes slurs on motives or characters. All questions should be addressed to and through the moderator. Reconsideration can be moved by anyone voting. Two-thirds vote is required by town bylaw for reconsideration. Reconsideration can be always considered until the town meeting is closed. If business is not completed in one evening, reconsideration can be moved in subsequent evening. No action can be presumed to be final until the meeting is dissolved. Finally, speaking time. Without first obtaining the leave of the meeting, no person shall speak more than twice on any question except to correct a mistake or misstatement, and no person shall speak more than five minutes at one time without being recognized by the moderator. I'll entertain a motion to waive the reading of the warrant. Second, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article one, Lisa O'Donnell.
Aye. Lisa O'Donnell, move that the town vote to amend Section 2-1.1A of the Town Bylaws relating to the date of the Fall Town Meeting, as shown in Article one of the Town Meeting Warrant.
Sir, second.
A couple of years ago, when we formalized Fall Town Meeting in the bylaws, calling it Fall Town Meeting rather than special, we had, as the warrant shows, scheduled it to be held on the Monday preceding, the Monday preceding Thanksgiving. What happens next year and the year after that is that lands on Veterans Day and the day that Veterans Day is celebrated in the two subsequent years. So, we're trying to change the bylaw just to reflect that and to allow the Board of Selectmen in those years to pick another Monday in the fall to schedule the town meeting, since we can't schedule it on a national holiday.
Any further discussion? This requires a majority of vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Article two, David Dome.
Aye, David A. Dome, move that the town vote to transfer from the free cash...
Is that mic on?
Yeah, it's on. Let me swallow the thing. ...sum of $50,000 for the management of property at Canoma Point, including but not limited to renovation, demolition, and management of structures, and maintenance and outfitting of all outdoor areas. Don't mention it.
Is there a second?
Second.
David, would you like to discuss it?
I'd like the Chairman of the Finance Committee to come up. I'd like to give an overview on the financial articles that are in town meeting tonight.
Hello, Michelle Dyer, 18R County Road. I have the privilege and honor of serving as the Chair of the Finance Committee for this town, and along with my colleagues, we have reviewed all of the monetary articles in the warrant, and we have indicated our support for all of them. But just to give you a sense of the process that we go through, each year, when we prepare the annual budget, we request that the department heads submit a budget without a lot of headroom. So, we don't want what's sometimes referred to as fluff in the budgets, and that means that later on in the year, if something unexpected comes up, then we have monetary articles that come up at the Fall Town Meeting, so that we can allocate the money to support those expenses. Most of these are either unforeseen, or they're required to happen after our free cash is certified, so that we understand how much money we have in order to allocate to some of our stabilization funds. I think, starting late August, is when the town starts gathering these requests, and over the course of the fall, they come in, starting in September, our committee reviews them, we go through them in very exhaustive detail. We ask a lot of follow-up questions, because we want to do due diligence and make sure that we understand the expenses, why they're unforeseen, and if we feel like there's something that should be accounted for in the regular budget, we make recommendations that they be put in the annual budget going forward. We each also pick a town department to serve as liaison, too, so we go to other conservation committee meetings, town building committee meetings, et cetera, so that we can understand the context of these requests as they come in. And then, if we have additional questions, then that appointed liaison goes and speaks to the department head, understands it, brings that back to the committee, and then we make our recommendations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If you... You're next.
Sarah Cushing, 113 Martin Street. Thank you. I just, $50,000 for maintenance and demolition of buildings, et cetera, seems like an awful lot of money. Can someone explain what the $50,000 is going to be used for, and are there really more buildings that are going to be torn down, and just what's happening with the $50,000?
This amount of money has been appropriated by the town meeting in the past, several times, actually. At those times, there were definitely more buildings that were being considered for removal, but there are still actually possibilities out there, and that when a building comes down, and I've been involved with all seven of them, depending on the complexities of the building, whether there's a large amount of asbestos in the building, the price is really, the cost of each demolition really can vary. And they varied from as low as $15,000 to as high as $80,000, when we had a situation where there was asbestos, not only in the structure, but it had become, the building materials had become unraveled, and the asbestos had actually rained down on things that were in the house, and those had to go as controlled waste as well. So, it all depends on what is encountered when a building is going to be demolished. Also, I can say that there's also things like small areas, we're going to be talking about one of them tonight, that the Selectmen may want to make minor improvements on. Perhaps, if you know where Robins Island Road is, number one, Robins Island Road was demolished a little while back, and there's an area there that might be good for picnic tables, and it's a little still rough around the edges. This money could also be used in an area like that, to help get that area more functional and safer for people that might use it. So, there really are a variety of things that need to be considered, and it's the plan of the Selectmen, after this last request for a special appropriation for management money, to work with the Finance Committee to get that into an annual budget line, because there is going to be ongoing maintenance and ongoing improvement out at Canoma Point. Hopefully, that helps address the question.
I just want to give a little background from a policy point of view. We've had this fund filled a number of times...
Can you state your name and your address?
I'm sorry, Lisa O'Donnell, 15 Island Road. We've had this fund filled a number of times, as Brendan has described, to handle some of the demolition work out at Canoma Point. Right now, the fund is fairly low, we're asking for this appropriation, so that we have money on hand to handle anything that does come up. We have no specific plans at this point, as many people are aware, we just completed a park, which was a fairly substantial capital project. We have nothing else planned right now, however, in taking care of the open spaces that have reverted to the town, we wouldn't have the flexibility to maintain them in the proper way. We have no more demolitions scheduled, nothing like that, but it's sort of a day-to-day or month-to-month maintenance issues that crop up from time to time. So, if people have questions, we're happy to answer them, but this is just giving us the flexibility and the ability to take care of the parts of Canoma Point that are within town control.
Any further discussion? This requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Majority rolls. Mr. Tar, would you like to give a view from the hill?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and far be it for me to pass up the opportunity to speak into an open microphone, but I did want to rise just for a couple of reasons. One, to thank everyone for coming out to participate in Town Meeting. It's one of the most essential forms of our democracy, and I know people have busy lives and lots of things to do, and it's critical that people come out to help the town make decisions, so I appreciate everyone being here. But I also really just wanted, Mr. Moderator, to say a word of thanks to all of the town employees and volunteers that were recognized here tonight. It is incredible how much volunteer and professional service is given by people in this community, so the town can be such a wonderful place to be. And a lot of times, that service doesn't get recognized, because it can be sort of mundane, it can be day-to-day, it can be not very flashy, but it is critically important. And I want to congratulate the moderator and the Board of Selectmen for taking the time to recognize all of those individuals that we'll recognize tonight, and particularly to say thank you to Brendan Zubricky, who is one of the most amazing town administrators in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I just want you to know, from our perspective in state government, you get to see how incredible he is at the local level, and the way that he works with all of us and collaborates and identifies opportunities for the town that it would never otherwise be able to take advantage of, is absolutely amazing. Mr. Moderator, when you were talking about the parking lot behind the post office, some of the grants that were delivered by state government for that were delivered because Brendan Zubricky did all of the hard work, got all of the applications in order, was a tireless advocate, and made sure that Essex got its fair share of state funding for that and so many other projects. And I don't know that we could ever calculate everything that Brendan has done and will do for this community, but I just wanted you to know, from the state legislative delegation, and I know Representative Franti would join me in this sentiment, that we appreciate the partnership that Brendan has with us, and it truly serves everyone in this community well, and it certainly is a huge asset to the legislative delegation as we work to advocate for this community. Last but not least, I would just say that we are in formal legislative session until November 15th, so I was able to take a break to come out tonight, just to share a few minutes with you at Town Meeting. We are working on a whole host of important issues, from criminal justice reform, to health care, to trying to make sure that we continue to move forward in our leadership in this country with regard to alternative energy. So, we have a whole host of things to continue to work on. It is an honor to represent you in that capacity, and it's a real honor to be here with you tonight, as we recognize the partnership that we all have with each other, to make sure that government works well and produces the kind of things that we want it to do for each and every one of us. So, thank you, Mr. Moderator, for an opportunity to say just a few words, and thanks to all of you.
There's a white Cherokee that's blocking, that's blocking traffic, Florida Plate HSQ C-92, if you can move it, we would appreciate it. What?
It's up by the bus.
Down by the bus.
Next to the bus.
Next to the bus.
Andrew Spinney, 54 Lufkin Street. I, Andrew Spinney, move that the town vote to transfer the following town-operated property from the Board of Selectmen acting as the Canoma Point Commissioners, which property is currently held for purposes of lease to the Board of Selectmen acting as the Canoma Point Commissioners for general municipal purposes, 9 Beach Circle, MAP 108, Lot 80.
Sir, second. Would you like to speak to the article?
This lot was the lot that had the house on it, which was moved, and it is now vacant. We have no immediate plans for it, but we want to leave it open in case we do have a plan.
Brendan, do you have anything to add?
That's pretty much it.
Any other discussion? This article requires two-thirds vote, because it's a transfer. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I declare two-thirds. Motion carries. Article four.
Andrew Spinney, 54 Lufkin Street. I, Andrew Spinney, move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the Massachusetts General Court for special legislation as set forth in Article Four of the town meeting warrant to allow police officers retiring from the town of Essex to work police details, provided, however, that the General Court may make clerical and editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the Board of Selectmen approve amendments to the bill before enactment by the General Court, and provided further that the Board of Selectmen is hereby authorized to approve amendments which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives above this petition.
Sir, second?
Would you like to speak to the article?
This article requires a majority vote. Go ahead, Brendan.
If you are at the annual town meeting, you might remember that something just like this actually was passed by the town meeting. There is, I believe it's on the back of the monetary summary, there is some language that explains the difference between the proposal that's here tonight and what was here for the annual town meeting, and that's the removal of one particular section. That's because when the petition went from the selectmen to the legislature, as voted by the annual town meeting, there's always a review by state agencies relative to what is being requested. And in this case, due to recent changes in law, there was a section that's actually in many similar pieces of special legislation for other communities that would exempt the town from unemployment liability for people that would serve in this capacity. And we were told that that's not something that's lawful. It was also a substantive change, so it's not anything that could come out without coming back to the town meeting, and that's why this request is before the town meeting again tonight.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Majority. Article passes. Article five.
Lisa O'Donnell, move that the town vote to amend the town zoning bylaw by adding a new section, six dash fourteen, temporary moratorium on recreational marijuana establishments as shown in Article Five of the town meeting warrant, which would temporarily prohibit the use of land for commercial recreational marijuana establishments, so that the planning board has sufficient time to study the issue and determine what, if any, zoning bylaw should be adopted.
Sir, second? This is zoning bylaw requires two-thirds. The town clerk has certified that the public hearings were held before the planning board on this article. Lisa.
Lisa O'Donnell, 15 Island. This article is simply asking for a temporary moratorium based on the schedule that the state is going to roll out their regulations overlaid with our town meeting schedule. Whatever happens for town bylaw, which doesn't have to happen at all, we don't have to do anything, and then we would be adopting what the state puts out. If we want to do anything that's more restrictive, we need to go through the bylaw process where the planning board would propose something. We hold hearings, bring it to a town meeting. And I believe since we are a town that voted for recreational marijuana, whatever bylaw changes actually go to the ballot as well. Correct, Greg? He's kind of nodding his head. He's going to come up and correct me when I'm done. But I just want to give you sort of the flavor of this and why we're asking for it, is that the state regulations will go into effect in March, and people can begin to apply for a license by the first of April, 2018. Our town meeting is obviously in May of 2018, so there's not really an opportunity to do anything reactive there if we want to do something different than what the state proposes. We could also do something for a town meeting without recognizing what the state puts in place. However, the wisest approach seems to be to wait until we see what the state puts forth and then decide as a town what we want to do and have that at next fall town meeting to make any decisions, if we want to make any decisions. So the moratorium is temporary. It extends the existing status, which is where no facilities can yet get licensed. It extends that status to the December 31st, 2018, which takes us beyond fall town meeting next year and gives us the opportunity to think through this as a town and make a decision for ourselves rather than just ending up with what the state has put forth. Now Greg's going to come fix everything I said.
I think she did a good job.
Any other discussion of this article? Mr. Burnham? Forty-five years.
Don't rub it in. That went by too fast. Wesley Burnham, 22 County Road. Currently acting chairman of the planning board. Planning board does recommend passing this. We would like to review what the state comes up with and try to decide whether we'd really like to essentially attack anything else through the zoning bylaws and the... The timeframes available by next spring town meeting are impossible based on the state schedule, so I recommend that we pass this.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I declare two-thirds. Motion carries. Wesley, before...because it's...you can come up. You know, there's a bicentennial committee, Don. There's a bicentennial committee that's starting to do work for our bicentennial party that will come with our 200 years of being a community. I sort of mentioned this after we're talking about pot, but I...
I don't know what the car looks like.
If anybody wants to sign up and help in the planning of the event, there's a sign-up here. So please sign up. It's a good thing. Imagine, 200 years, wow. So, but we...but like in everything, we need community support, so if you can sign up, thank you. Now Wesley, now you're up.
Thank you. Wesley Burnham, 22 County Road. I, Wesley Burnham, move that the town vote to amend the town zoning bylaws to correct certain typographical errors as shown in Article Six of the town meeting warrant.
Moved and seconded, Ward Smith at work. Wesley?
Reader's Digest version of what we're doing here is, back in 2010, we went through and reformatted Section Six of our zoning bylaws to make them easier to use and easier to read. What we've been doing is, every year or so, there are some items that we missed, and this is a list of five of them. One of them is a numbering error. Most of the rest of them are references contained within bylaws that refer to a second one for basically part of the support for the individual bylaw that we missed over the years, and we're just trying to correct it so it directs to the new numbered section, I guess. I guess we can...if anybody's got any specific questions, I can do better than that.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, requires two-thirds vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous. Article seven, Lisa.
Lisa O'Donnell, move that the town vote to transfer from the special revenue fund known as the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund, the sum of $80,000 for the design and construction of a municipal fiber optic network, or anything incidental or related thereto.
Sir, second?
Second.
This requires a majority vote.
I will not mangle any of this, other than to say that the $80,000 we're asking for is in a special fund that can only be used for technology, so it's not coming out of the general budget or free cash or anything like that. And now Brendan will tell you what it actually means.
Mr. Zubricki?
So the cable television contract with Comcast goes on a 10-year cycle. The last contract actually ran out in 2017, and so we negotiated a new contract for the next 10 years. In that contract, there was specifically $70,000 put aside for the creation of a fiber optic network that will be put in place to connect the various town buildings. Right now, our buildings are interconnected with virtual private networks, which means they each have an internet drop in the building, which we have to pay for, and that's how we get intercommunication among the buildings. That's expensive. It's also not as efficient as if we had our own direct fiber link among the buildings. And so, therefore, when the selectmen negotiated the contract, they saw to it that the money would be put aside in there. Added to that $70,000 was a $15,000 grant from the previous contract for similar purposes, but we didn't need the network at that point in time. That was 10 years ago. So there's actually $85,000 of dedicated funds, and we also, each quarter, make some funds from a surcharge that goes on the cable bills that will replenish that fund over time. But this will allow this network to be built, and again, it's with funds that are dedicated and can't really be used for anything else.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, requires a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous. Motion carries. Article eight, David.
I, David Don, move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $12,000 to increase the custodian wages budget, wine item, and the town property budget, as voted under Article 10 at the May 1/1st, 217 annual town meeting, from $20,000, 254 to $32,000, 254.
Sir, second?
Second.
This requires a majority vote. David?
Would you like to speak to the motion?
The money that we're asking for would create a second part-time janitorial position for someone that would be dedicated exclusively to town hall. I'm going to ask Brendan to elaborate more on the scope of this position, but it's not just for custodial duties, it's for also maintenance of the building and taking care of things that come up that would require handyman skills, painting, patching, repairing, whatever it is, with the intent of keeping the town hall library building in excellent shape that it's been left after its restoration. This is in addition to the other part-time custodian who takes care of all the other town buildings. He does a 19-hour job and takes care of Xeno Center, Town Hall, Fire and Police, and the Water Filtration Plant.
The restroom at Memorial Park.
Okay, the restroom, right, the restroom at Memorial Park. So that's already pretty much...those other buildings alone as a 19-hour position is full, and there's not really sufficient time to properly care for the town hall in its new form. So I'm going to ask Brendan quickly to elaborate what the duties would be.
Lisa, actually, do we need to listen to Brendan on this?
No.
Any further discussion? I'm going to have to put a microphone in front of Brendan. All those in favor, say aye. Requires a majority vote.
Aye.
In unanimous. Article nine.
I, David Don, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $40,000 to purchase and equip a police cruiser and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to dispose of the cruiser replaced by the purchase or sale of trade.
Second.
Sir, second?
Yes. Would you like to discuss the new truth?
Maybe the chief might want to speak. Do you want to speak on this cruiser?
No objection to the chief speaking on the cruiser. Seeing none?
Go ahead.
We're asking for the approval and the warrant to replace the cruiser. We're in a cycle every year with the cars that every year we replace one car. We average between 30,000 and 35,000 or so miles per year. So by the time that the replacement of a cruiser, which generally takes almost four months, the last one took almost five months, we're going to be well over 100,000 miles. And of course, the greater the mileage, the more maintenance and things that you have to do for the cars and so forth. So we're creeping up to 100,000, and if we did get this approval, it does take a period of time to get the car ordered, and it would be a Ford very similar to the car that we have now.
Any further discussion? This requires a majority. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
A majority. Article carries, passes. Article 10. Benjamin?
Benjamin Butrick from 141 Main Street. I, Benjamin Butrick, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $100,000 to fund the town's other post-employment benefits or OPEB trust fund.
Sir, second?
Would you like to speak to the article?
Sure, I can briefly explain this. So the OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits, is an accruing liability to the town for post-employment benefits, which is primarily health care expense for municipal employees. And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts allows for towns to set up a trust fund to cover this future liability, and it's something that we can vote upon each year to determine or to properly fund the trust fund for the future liability. It is underfunded, so it is at the discretion of the town to determine how much to fund each year, and so we've recommended $100,000 to try and bring the fund balance up.
Any further discussion? Mr. Lynch?
What does that leave the liability underfunded, or is it still underfunded even with this $100,000?
Yes, actually, it is. It's pretty significantly underfunded, which is actually very common in the state. Nearly all of these trust funds are underfunded because there...it is...the liability goes so far out, so there's a long time to actually be able to put the money away. So there's actually an investment policy to cover the future liability.
Right, so what is it...what does this leave, what is the amount that is underfunded?
Through the moderator, Mr. Lynch?
Excuse me, through you, Mr. Moderator.
Brendan, can you answer that question?
Sure. As of March, it was about $2.8 million underfunded, and it's currently, the balance is about half a million. So, sure.
Through you.
Any further discussion of this article? Requires a majority. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Andrew?
Andrew Spinney, 54 Lufkin Street. I, Andrew Spinney, move that the town vote to amend Section 226 revolving funds of the town bylaws as shown in Article 11 of the town meeting warrant.
Sir, second?
Revolving funds are funds where money is dedicated for a specific purpose and can be spent on that purpose, and it doesn't fall to the town's general fund, so you can segregate the fund. Recently, the Department of Revenue interpreted law to indicate that towns had to have a bylaw...
bylaw for revolving funds to codify how they work in each community, and the town meeting did that. When the Office of the Attorney General was reviewing that particular bylaw, it determined, it did approve the bylaw, but with a caution, and that's because in a couple of places, and you'll see in the warrant, the bylaw was referencing donations and grants. Since there's other state law, body of other state law, that deals with how towns receive and hold donations and grants, they indicated it would be more appropriate to drop that language from the bylaw and just handle anything that comes in that way using those other statutes. And that's why this housekeeping item has come before you.
This article requires a majority. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Lisa.
Aye, Lisa O'Donnell. Move that the town vote to amend the general bylaws by adding to the bylaws general language relative to enforcement of the bylaws through non-criminal disposition, as shown in Article 12 of the town meeting warrant, with a revision that the language be placed at the end of Section 2-21, as opposed to as new Article 4-17, and that all references to Section 417 in the warrant, article language be deleted. So there's just a little addendum there.
Is there a second? Would it be too much to ask you to read the 417-1 and 417-2?
Yep, I would do that. So I'm going to read from the article, and this, actually, where it says 417 would be 2-21, right, Brendan? That's a change?
It would be tacked on to the end of existing Section 2.
2-21, okay.
So it would be new paragraphs that would not be numbered.
Okay. The paragraphs would not be numbered, but would be titled "Enforcement by Non-Criminal Disposition." Any bylaw of the Town of Essex or rule or regulation of its officers, boards, or departments, the violation of which is subject to a specific penalty, may, in the discretion of the town official, who is the appropriate enforcing person, be enforced in the method provided in Section 21D of Chapter 40 of the Massachusetts General Laws. The non-criminal fine for each such violation, if not otherwise specified, shall be $300. Section on definition. Enforcing person as used in this bylaw shall mean any Town of Essex police officer with respect to any offense, as well as the building inspector and his designee, the members of the Conservation Commission and its designee, the members of the Board of Health, its health agent or other designee, the animal control officer, the harbor master, and other such officials as the Board of Selectmen may from time to time designate, each with respect to violation of bylaws and rules and regulations within their respective jurisdictions. If more than one official has jurisdiction in a given case, any such official may be an enforcing person with respect thereto.
Thank you. Brendan, did you say that the numbering isn't required?
So, Mr. Moderator, this would be to add those two paragraphs to the end of Section 2-21, just as ending paragraphs with no numbers.
So then, I need the motion amended to reflect that the numbering is not a part of the motion, of the article.
In the motion that was made, it says that all references to Section 4-17 be deleted, and it doesn't indicate that other numbers be put in.
I understand. For clarity, I would ask that amendment be done, because we're voting on the article as shown, and it includes the numbering. I just need that out, so it doesn't appear in our bylaws.
Okay. I don't know how to amend it.
4-17.1, and 4-17.2, so that everything that you see in the warrant remains except those numbers and gets added to the end of Article of Section 2-21.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Wesley. Isn't zoning, you know?
Okay. Would move indefinitely postpone action on Article 12 of the 217 Fall Town Meeting.
Is there a second?
All right, I'll try to explain my hot burn with this. We currently have 2-21.
Wesley, I got a motion on the floor. You can ask.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We had a motion and a second. All right? Can I ask for any more discussion? Are you speaking to the amendment?
No. Well, actually, to the amendment, I'm asking about... Let's get the amendment done, and then you can do the article.
Any more discussion on the amendment?
Which just changed the numbers.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Amendment carries by majority. Any discussion on the main article? That's you.
Oh.
Would you like to come back?
How you getting me flustered? Wesley Burnham, 22 County Road, Essex. Aye, Wesley Burnham. Move to indefinitely postpone action on Article 12 of the 2017 Town.
Is there a second?
Would you like to speak to this?
Please. May I?
Yes.
Okay. We already have existing in our bylaws 2-21, which obviously you all know that now, because they changed all the numbers to make it conform with the existing. It references pretty much the same sections. The two section, or the two aspects of this that I've got a problem with is the added statement of the non-criminal fine for each violation, if not otherwise specified, shall be 300 bucks. The way I read that, looking through, let's take the dog bylaw that's out there. If you've got your dog running, gets caught in the park, there is no specified penalty for violating that. It would fall under this. So your dog running in the park, or you taking it in the park, potentially could cost you 300 bucks. And there's a whole bunch of conditions, the way they worded it. There are conditions that if you violate it, you could be subject to a penalty, which, unless it was specifically specified for a certain amount, it falls to 300 bucks. The other portion I've got a little bit of heartburn with is the addition of the enforcing persons. This adds members of the Conservation Commission, members of the Board of Health, and anybody else that the selectmen feels. Now, I've got page and a half of Chapter 40, 21D. Essentially, this is more what I would expect someone trained police officer, or building inspector, or those that are actually the enforcement offices to be utilizing, because theoretically, this winds up going down to the district court. The appeal process is through the district court, and essentially, we're assigning elected members and appointed members that authority to write citations, that your only way out is to get on and fight it out with the clerk magistrate or the judge. So I think it works just fine the way it is. We have our enforcement offices. They do a pretty good job. They know their limitations, and they know what they've got. I think this is an unnecessary expansion. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Lisa?
Lisa O'Donnell, 15 Island. Article, existing Section 221 is outdated and lacks important details, including specification of penalty amounts and designation of officers with enforcement authority. So the article is proposed to add some of that clarity to the situation. Bottom line, what this article does is gives the town the ability to enforce parts of the bylaw that are in place, that are a bylaw that don't have specific penalties or fines attached to them with the way the bylaw is written. So Wesley is correct that we do have people to enforce the bylaw, but there are some areas on the bylaw that don't list penalties, so therefore, without a penalty imposed on a particular bylaw, then the bylaw is really ineffective. We can't do anything to actually enforce it. And as far as, excuse me, having these various people designated, they obviously would work within their jurisdiction, so the Conservation Commission is not going to issue parking tickets. They're going to address what's in their purview, same with the Board of Health, animal control officer, and harbor master. So what this article is asking to do is to give the town the ability to enforce our bylaws. It's fairly straightforward that way.
Any other discussion of the motion? The motion is to indefinitely postpone. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Article 13, David.
Aye, David Doan. Move that the town vote to establish a new Section 3C of Chapter 416 of the town's general bylaws dealing with dog waste, as shown in Article 13 of the town meeting warrant.
Is there a second? Want to discuss it?
Not really.
This article addressing, sorry, Lisa O'Donnell.
Can I ask you, Lisa?
15 Island. This article addressing removal and disposal of dog waste is appearing on the warrant tonight, because the Board of Selectmen, animal control officer, and town clerk have heard a lot of complaints, and Brendan as well, from residents about pooping incidents. So what we're trying to provide here is some authority for the animal control officer to oversee this and to enforce some kind of regulations that would make people responsible for their animals' waste. And again, like I said, this has been kind of a hot issue with some people in town and has been brought to us, and therefore, we saw fit to put this on the warrant.
Mr. Burnham?
Just a quick question. What's the penalty for this?
But there is nothing for... Because Article 12 has been indefinitely postponed, you won't get whacked $300. Right now, this change does not outline penalties. Coming up shortly is Article 15 that would outline penalties, not just for poop violations, but also for other animal violations. So Article 15 addresses enforcement and penalties for the animal control bylaw. Coming up next.
Any other discussion?
Rich O'Donnell, 48 Belcher Street. My concern about this law, I do recognize, if you're in a downtown area, that is a concern. But if you're on a rural street, such as Belcher Street, let's say Cho Street, walking your dog, and you take a stick and push it off, you could still be guilty. $300 fine for such a rural street, I think is a little bit excessive. I think we should do something to kind of limitation of this law, just not make it a general law across the whole town. Thank you.
Just to address that concern, to be in violation of this law, the dog has to be caught in the act, as it were, by the animal control officer, by the animal control officer before you get a fine. The fines that are proposed in Article 15, which is coming up, is that the first offense is a written warning, second offense is $100 fine, and the third offense would be the $300 fine. So we're not looking at $300 fine right off the bat. The other, the sort of de facto administration of this will be complaint-driven, in my mind, that if someone is suffering chronic problems in their front yard, they can complain to the animal control officer, who could then try to witness the offensive act and write up the person who's in charge of the dog that's doing this. It's not going to be someone patrolling the streets watching you and your dog all the time. So this is an ability for the town to address complaints.
Any other discussion?
David Driscoll, 145 Western Avenue. My concern with this is really, how enforceable is this bylaw? We have a bylaw that's suggesting or stating that we have to take care of our dogs, and I could totally understand that, and I respect that, but if someone is pooping on someone else's lawn, you know, how, I really have a hard time imagining how the process would be, because if you have to have an animal control officer actually witness it, I mean, how enforceable is this law really? It seems to me that if someone called the animal control officer and said, "Mr. Smith's dog was pooping on my yard. I want you to do something about it," and they do it all the time, you know, what kind of proof would the animal control officer need, or the town need, to find that individual? I mean, because you said the animal control officer would actually visually have to see the dog perform the act. I don't see how this is really enforceable.
Any other discussion?
Since it is so difficult to, how I imagine, to enforce, why should we have something like this on the bylaws?
Town clerk would like to speak to this article with the assent of the meeting body. Does anyone object to our town clerk discussing or speaking to this article? Did I hear no?
Just a couple of points to consider as you make your decision. We do have issues in town, for example, where people are putting their dogs in their car, going down to Centennial Grove, sitting in their car on their phone and watching their dog defecate in the middle of the field, or at the school, where their dogs aren't supposed to be there in the first place, but the dog is going to the bathroom there. They're on their phone, they're not paying attention, and therein lies a pile left behind. This bylaw also provides that a person, under the care and custody and control of a dog, has to have a receptacle with them to pick up the objects left behind. to pick up the objects left behind.
Any further discussion? This requires a majority. All those in favor of this article, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Majority, motion carries.
Aye, Lisa O'Donnell. Move that the town vote to amend section 4-16.6 of the town bylaws by deleting the existing section D, kennels, as shown in the yellow handout titled, Text of Existing Animal Control Bylaw Licensing Section in its entirety, and replacing it as shown on the white handout entitled Proposal for Kennel Licensing Revisions.
Is there a second? Okay, before we, does everyone have the text of the old and the text of the new? It's up here up front if you don't have it. Does anyone need to get a copy? Go ahead, Lisa.
The gist of the revision is on kennel licenses. And the way licenses, kennel licenses stand now in the bylaw is that there are five categories of kennels, which you can see on the left-hand side. And then there are three categories of license, five dogs or less, six to 10 dogs, and 11 or more dogs. We've recently had some requests, and I'm going to ask Christina to come forward again and to speak to this article as well. She can give you more of the background. We've had requests for some sizable kennel operations in town, and this brought this to our attention. Another thing to consider with this is that because Essex doesn't have zoning districts, we don't have an opportunity to control kennel size by area or location of it at all. So any of these kennels could happen anywhere in town, as it stands now. So the bylaw revision that we're asking for would put a cap on the number of dogs for the maximum license. So it says 11 more dogs. That would be changed per the descriptions in the revision article. That would put a limit of 50 dogs on a new license, and a cap of 100 dogs for an existing license that is already in place for an 11 or more dogs. So that's essentially our grandfather clause for an existing kennel who has gotten their license and is operating with the understanding that they would have essentially unlimited. So we're going from unlimited to 100 as a cap on these grandfathered licenses. For new licenses, we're looking at a cap of 50. The other teeth, pun intended here, is that we're asking that for new kennel licenses, that there would be a hearing. And the hearing would be very similar to a planning board hearing, and we would ask for the input of various other boards, the Planning Board, Animal Control Officer, Conservation Commission, and Board of Health, anyone that has jurisdiction over this. And then the article says the Board of Selectmen would take into account factors such as, but not limited to, geographic location, setbacks to property lines, proximity to abutters, distance to similar facilities, and the number of dogs per acre of land. The reason for this hearing is to provide some oversight, not that we're trying to stifle kennels at all, but to provide some oversight on the size and density of kennels that could come into town. There are obviously areas in town that are more rural and appropriate for larger kennel operations, and there are very clustered residential neighborhoods where it might not be as appropriate. So this would give us the ability, with the input from the public in a hearing, to review a kennel license and to set a cap on that particular license that's respectful for both kennel operator and for the neighborhood that they're proposing. Other than that, that's the main change is that they were opposing. There's some other minor language in here. If anyone has any questions, we'd be happy to try and address those, Brendan, Greg, or I.
Any further discussion?
Wesley Burnham, 22 County Road. My primary issue with this tonight isn't what they're trying to do. It's this particular bylaw is not ready to be put in place. I got a copy of this this afternoon, and in the first cut, I mean, I've got some markups with issues with the wording, and references back and forth. I won't go into it because it's not worth it for you guys to listen to. Generally speaking, we went from this much wording in the town warrant to three pages of how we're going to deal with basically kennels, licensing, advertising, who's got jurisdiction over what, blah, 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 blah. And it just goes on. It needs to be done. The planning board has already been involved. The initial idea was that we would put it under our special permit process. But after working that through and thinking it through, that's far too cumbersome for anybody to try to do anything. Because the way this is written now, this would roll all the way down to those with four dogs, not just the upper end. It's written for every kennel, which is one of the issues I've got with it. At this time, I'd like to say I'm going to propose that we indefinitely postpone action on this until we have a chance to review it, vet it, and try to get it right the first time.
You making a motion?
I am. I move. I, Wesley Burnham, move to indefinitely postpone any action on Article 14 of the 2017 Fall Hymn.
And you just spoke to that motion, correct?
Pretty much.
Sounded like it to me. Is there a second? We're discussing indefinitely postponing this article. Lisa? Wait, wait, one second, Lisa. Let this gentleman speak.
The article is...
Just give this gentleman first. Thank you.
Edward Jeffries, Southern Ave. And I'd just like to echo Mr. Burnham's comments that I don't think this is carefully worded. It lumps in private kennels with commercial, corporate, and veterinary kennels. I think we should more carefully lay this out and word it. And I think private kennels should be considered differently from commercial, corporation, veterinary kennels. And I think we should give this some more thought. Thank you.
Lisa?
We actually have given this a lot of thought and a lot of discussion, and there's probably not been a topic that we spent so much time on in the past several months. This bylaw as written has gone through town council and Brendan, and through our board a couple of times. We reviewed it. It says what we want. We know we're saying all kennels. And we're not, we're not trying to say no to kennels. We're trying to provide a little oversight to protect neighborhoods and residents from kind of unpleasant situations. So if someone comes in with a completely reasonable request, that's not our intent to deny it. This is just a control measure for someone who comes and asks about a 200-dog kennel in a residential neighborhood. We want the ability to say no to that. If we indefinitely postpone it, this individual who's actually come before our Town Clerk, and I'm going to ask Christina to speak to this now, could come back and apply for that license. And we have no way of overseeing that, of saying no, or doing anything. So then the kennel happens, and the only police measures that we have for it later on are complaint-driven, and then bringing them in for hearings and trying to revoke a license. So this is really just trying to protect the community. And we're not trying to crack down on anything that veterinary kennel, a private kennel, anything like that. It's just to give us the ability. Regarding the language, I'm not a lawyer. Greg is. He worked through this. I'm confident that he's written something that is defensible. I'd like to ask Christina to come up now to, just to give her background on why this is before you.
Does anyone object to Christina speaking before the body?
So we realized this summer, when slowly kennel licenses, people were inquiring a little bit more. There's one that was carefully and thoughtfully constructed out on Southern Ave, who came before the building inspector, updated their systems according to necessarily waste flow out of the house. There is also a breeding kennel in the same area. There is a gentleman who came in and wanted to take an existing commercial facility out on Southern Ave and expand his doggy daycare business that's already in Beverly. He wanted to have at least 200 clients. Later on in the summer, there was a person who put a property under agreement who wanted to breed service dogs, having approximately 30 to 40. So all of a sudden, a very short period of time, we were talking about 300 to 400 dogs within a half a mile as the crow flies. And we realized we had, as Lisa said, little options besides a complaint-driven process. So as we've heard other, and there's options for noise bylaws here as well, kennels can be very, very loud. With, and, excuse me, I mentioned waste before. Doggy daycares do not have to have proper sewer or septic considerations. You can have day dogs all day long. It's not until the dogs become overnight boarding dogs that you need to have an adequate septic system or adequate sewer flow to maintain a certain number of dogs. This kennel proposal only addresses kennels that are sizes 11 or greater. It does not impact the process for kennels 10 or smaller. There's only one kennel license right now in the town of Essex that's issued for dogs 11 or older. And because of the investment that they made in the size of the facility and the location, we've asked for them to be grandfathered. We've had other issues in the past where there was a person who ran a doggy daycare with up to 15 dogs out of a two-bedroom condominium. So as we don't have zoning in Essex right now, these can easily fall under our home occupation bylaw, which allows for two people who don't reside there to be engaged, no outside change of appearance, no traffic greater than already exists, and no more than two commercial vehicles, and so on and so forth, that may not have to do with dogs specifically.
Any further discussion of Mr. Burnham's article?
I want to reiterate that I'm not, again, some kind of bylaw. I am, again, this one right now. For example, she just stated that this only applies to 11 dogs or more. Well, if you look on D, under D1, an owner or keeper of a pack of four dogs or less may obtain a kennel license. And then the procedure for getting a kennel license is under it. It's not a serious thing, but it is, that's why it needs to be vetted better. The wording, I've got issues with it. The other thing, for another example, she talks about the existing facility out on Southern Ave that they're going to allow essentially to be grandfathered. And theoretically, that grandfather should go on. Till you get to page three, where the second paragraph down, it starts with, "For the first renewal made after the effective date of the bylaw, which theoretically would be tonight, the town clerk in consultation with the Animal Control Office shall specify in the license each kennel the maximum number of dogs to be kept on the premises." So they theoretically, based on that statement, could tell this individual that they've agreed already to 100, oh, we changed our mind. You're now down to 20. That's the kind of wording that needs to be vetted out before we enact this thing. I'm not saying not to. I'm just saying, give us a little more time. Let's vet the thing out and make sure it's clean and fair for everybody.
Lisa, wait a second.
Janet Jeffries, 96 Southern Ave in Essex. Closer still? Is that better? No? Get real close? Okay. Jan Jeffries, 96 Southern Ave, excuse me, in Essex. I've had a kennel license here in town for 18 years. And I understand not wanting commercial kennels to come in. My concern, and having spoken to Christina, having spoken to the Animal Control Officer, I understand it. I have concerns, having seen this just tonight for the first time as well. Because I fall into that limbo area. I've had a kennel license for 10 dogs most of that time, until Sally retired. Then they individually licensed my dogs by the dog number as opposed to the license. So if I wanted to go to more than my 10, I would have to go through the process of 11 with the Board of Health, and I understand that. I breed dogs, and so my numbers fluctuate. I don't ever have more than what I'm allowed to have. But the wiggle room for the commercial and the new applicants has more leeway than what I, as a legal kennel holder for 18 years, would have. I'm concerned about the renewal section, section five. The registration date for our kennel states April 1st to March 31st of each calendar year. But my process has to be submitted and approved by the Animal Control Officer by March 1st. So I'm a little bit confused about that. Because if, like I do, I go on March 30th to get my license, and Amy doesn't come by till it's mutually convenient for both of us, I'm then out of my license, and I would have to reapply for a license starting all over again with the Board of Selectmen at that point. So I feel like the concept is great. I understand that there were, there was an influx of interest because we don't have any zoning laws about this. And I know that you did spend time on it. I know that there were numbers suggested by our professional who oversees this on a day-to-day basis. I just, there's not distinction between somebody like me or someone like Wesley, who perhaps has four. But by definition, anybody with four dogs or more is a kennel, and it needs to be inspected. So there's just, there's a huge difference between someone with four or 10 dogs and 100. I get it, but those are my concerns as well.
Any further discussion? Lisa? Is there a second time on this article, on this motion?
First, I just want to correct one little thing is that Christina said 11 or more dogs, but the intent is to oversee all kennels because of some areas in town. Six to 10 dogs could be problematic. So it seemed cleaner to have hearings on any size kennel. I understand from both the last woman who spoke and from Wesley that maybe this is not perfect. There's some clarifications that may be made, but as you can see, we amend bylaws all the time. The article, the item that Wesley was talking about, the new licenses issued between November 14th, that second paragraph in section five, the intent is not that on an annual basis we would revisit the number of dogs in any kennel. Only a complaint would do that after that number has been initially established. So the renewal process... So the renewal process is just getting the paperwork done on time. Regarding the question of animal control officer's availability, I think we're a small enough town that we would understand that if the person who's supposed to inspect you wasn't able to do it in the right amount of time, we wouldn't hold you to that. I don't know what else to say, outside of, this has been vetted by Town Council and written, and the intent of it is to provide oversight and to protect our community. We're not objecting to commercial kennels. We're not trying to stifle anything. We're just trying to do it in a manner that's going to keep things habitable for butters. I think postponing this now would be problematic, as you've heard from Christina. There've been a number of inquiries into this. The first shot we get at it is next May. A lot can happen in six months. Any kennel license that comes in, we would have no control over without this bylaw in place. So I'm asking you, please don't indefinitely postpone this, please, let's move forward with this so that we can protect the neighborhoods in Essex.
Any further discussion of the article to indefinitely postpone? All those in favor of indefinitely? Counsel can speak to a question. Was there a question to the council? What did you want to clarify, Greg? Yeah, I'm a little bit confused, too, you know. Okay.
Thank you through you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, my name is Greg Corbo. I'm Town Council for the town of Essex. And I just thought there were, there were a few points that, that seemed to be engendering some, some confusion here. First and foremost, the way that the bylaw and the general laws exist right now, if you are a keeper of four or more dogs on a single premises, you are required to obtain a kennel license from the town clerk. In order to obtain such a kennel license, you must first have an inspection from the animal control officer. Unless the kennel fails the animal control officer's inspection, the town clerk is required to give you a kennel license. So what the intent of this bylaw is, is to establish a procedure that allows for additional review of applications for kennel licenses, to ensure that they do not create a nuisance to the neighborhood in which they're situated. Now, a couple of things about that procedure is that the requirement for having a public hearing is for new kennel licenses only. So if you are renewing a previously issued kennel license, you are not required to have another public hearing unless you are intending to increase the number of dogs that had been previously allowed. So under the existing bylaw, there were different categories of, of kennels based on size. If you're renewing a license, staying within the same size category, you will not be required to have a public hearing going forward. It's only if you're a new license, or if you're looking to increase your existing license, that the public hearing would be required. Again, as, as Lisa previously stated, the public hearing requirement would apply to all new kennel licenses regardless of their size. And with respect to the issuance of the number of dogs allowed, that's merely a bookkeeping function, so that if you have a license now and you're licensed for between four and six dogs, when you get your new license for the first time under the new bylaw, it's going to say on it that the maximum you're authorized to have is six dogs, because that's the category that you were previously in. Again, if you want to amend that, you can amend that by having a hearing before the Board of Selectmen. So, you know, in, in summary, there's, there's nothing here that changes the law as to kennels. If you had a kennel before, you're required to have a license. If you are going to have a kennel under the new bylaw, you're required to have the license. The only difference now is that there are additional procedures that will have to be followed in order to obtain a license, so that the Board of Selectmen and the town clerk and the animal control officer can ensure that the kennel that you're proposing is not going to cause a nuisance to the neighborhood.
Any further discussion? Is her second time?
So I just want to clarify then, is that working? Just want to clarify then that the renewal that states March 1st, and the kennel license itself goes from Mar, April 1st to March 31st, there is a period of time there where if it is not renewed, then in fact, that except is provided in the following paragraphs, "No public hearing will be required for renewal of a kennel license, provided that a timely renewal application is filed." There is a loophole in there where the town could say, oops, you missed it, because of the way this is written. So do I make an amendment to change that date?
You cannot amend, the only thing you can, we're voting on a motion to indefinitely postpone, you cannot amend that motion. You can do that after the vote on indefinitely postponing, when we take up the, we take up the main motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor of indefinitely postponing this article, please say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion to indefinitely postpone fails. Now we will take the main article. Any more discussion of the main article?
Mr. Moderator?
There's no, first of all, you have the right now to, you have the right to make an amendment on the main motion. We were discussing the indefinitely postponement, um, motion, which is not, you cannot amend it. So if you wish to, I think you're first.
My guess, I was going to do it for her. Can she come back? Because she's spoken twice. Okay, come on back. So, all right. So I would like to make an amendment to Article 14. Is that, right? Okay. I have to quit writing? Okay. So, all right, I would like to make an amendment to change the renewal date from March 1st to March 31st.
Is that all?
I think so.
Doesn't ma, doesn't matter, that's, you, you have to wait. Is that your entire? Yes, is that your amendment?
Yes, for, for that, yes.
Okay. Is there a second to that amendment? Is there any discussion to the amendment? Lisa? Mr. Corbo? The question was, is there a loophole? And, go ahead, Greg.
Thank you through you, Mr. Moderator. So the, the issue here is at the bottom of the second page, kennel license renewals. It says kennel licenses may be renewed by submitting a renewal application to the town clerk, along with the required fee and proof of inspection by the animal control officer by March 1st. The following paragraph says, "Except is provided in the following paragraph, no public hearing will be required for renewal of a kennel license, provided that a timely renewal application is filed. Failure to file renewal application and pay the applicable fee by the deadline set forth above will result in a subsequent application being treated as a new application." So when you read these two sentences together, what it means is that if you have an existing kennel, you have to file an application to renew by March 1st, so that you can have a new license on April 1st. If you do not submit your application on time, the result is that your application is, is treated as a new application, or an application for a new license, which means that you have to go through the public hearing procedure. So I wouldn't describe it as a loophole, I would describe it as a penalty. If you, if you do not want to have to go through the public hearing, you've got to submit your application on time. The original proposal was to have that deadline be March 1st. The proposal before you now is to change that to have it be March 31st for a permit or a license that goes into effect on April 1st. The reason for choosing the March 1st date was to have a buffer between the submission of applications and the processing of those applications by the town clerk and the animal control officer, so that licenses could be issued in a timely manner. With this change, applications could be submitted on the 31st for licenses that have to be issued a day later on April 1st. But that's up, up to the voters as to whether they, they wish to give the clerk that grace period or not. But again, it's not a loophole, it's just a, it sets forth an application deadline.
Any further discussion of the amendment? Okay, all those in favor of the amendment, assuming that I get a written copy, say aye. Opposed, say no. Amendment does not carry. Please still, I need a copy. Back to the main motion. Any further discussion of the main motion? All right. All those in favor of the main motion, please say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries by majority. Article 15. Andrew.
Andrew Spinney, 54 Lufkin Street. I, Andrew Spinney, moved at the town vote to amend Section 4-16.8, enforcement and penalties of the town animal control bylaw, as shown in Article 15 of the town warrant.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
So earlier in Article 12, there was the, a discussion of the general penalty for the violation of a bylaw. At that time, there was discussion about how there would be a way to look at a penalty just for a violation of the animal control bylaw, and it does have a tiered approach with a written warning, $100 fine, $300 fine. This is something that's very specific, and one of the reasons that it's being done is because right now, if you look at the animal control bylaw, there's only a fine for violations of a couple provisions of it. In this, when the selectmen looked at the animal control bylaw again with the town clerk, it became quite evident that it really should be something that's applicable to every provision of the animal control bylaw. And so, uh, this article provides very specific penalties with a tiered approach, and there's very specific people that can, um, issue the fine. So it's very different than the more generic one that the meeting considered earlier.
Any other discussion? Requires majority vote. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article 16, Lisa.
Aye, Lisa O'Donnell, moved at the town vote to transfer from the historic preservation reserve of the Community Preservation Fund, the sum of $10,000 to replace the footings for the two historic lamp posts in front of Town Hall, including any necessary electrical work or work appurtenant thereto, and to restore and preserve the decorative artwork on the historic safe doors that are mounted in the lobby of Town Hall.
Sir, second? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article 17.
Paul Rulo, Low Hill Road, DPW Board Member. Aye, Paul Rulo, move that the town vote to transfer from wastewater free cash the sum of $20,000 to be added to the sewer.
You've got to speak closer to the mic, Paul.
Aye, Paul Rulo, move that the town vote to transfer from wastewater free cash the sum of $20,000 to be added to the sewer enterprise fund maintenance line item for fiscal year 2018, as voted under Article 11 of the May 1, 2017 annual town meeting.
Sir, second? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carry, carries unanimously. Article 18.
Aye, Paul Rulo, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $5,000 to be added to the Department of Public Works Stormwater Compliance Expense Budget Line Item for fiscal year 2018, as voted under Article 10 of the May 1, 2017 annual town meeting.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Requires a majority? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article 19, Ben.
Aye, Benjamin Butcherk of 141 Main Street, move that the town transfer from free cash the following sums to the following police department budget line items for fiscal year 2018. Sick leave buyback, $13,809. In-service training expense, $4,500. Uniform allowance, $2,500. And part-time police salaries, $22,349, all to be added to the amounts voted under Article 10 of the May 1, 2017 annual town meeting.
Sir, second? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries by majority. Rob?
Thank you. Rob Fitzgibbon, 18 Main Street. Aye, Rob Fitzgibbon, move that the town vote to establish a new stabilization fund, known as the Town Hall Library Repair and Maintenance Fund, and to transfer from free cash the sum of $20,000 to be added to said fund.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article 21, Michelle Dyer.
Aye, Michelle Dyer, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sums of $20,000 to be added to each of the following funds, the town's capital building improvements fund, the town's recreational capital improvements fund, and the town's purchase of vehicles and major equipment that qualify as capital purchases fund, for a total appropriation of $60,000.
Is there a second? Careful. Any discussion on the article? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article 22.
Aye, Michelle Dyer, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $30,000 to the Finance Committee's Reserve Fund for fiscal year 2018.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article 23.
Aye, Michelle Dyer, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $50,000 to be added to the town's stabilization fund.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Any discussion? Nice for putting money in the stabilization fund. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Go ahead, David.
I, David Cabora, 24A Maple Street, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $483.77 for unpaid wages for a past fiscal year.
Is there a second? This requires a nine-tenths vote, paying bills from the previous fiscal year. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. If there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.